Thank you. I'll then call for the vote, those in favor. That's carried, thank you. We're moving to item C, no proclamations and announcements. Number two, page three of your agenda, please. We will start with item 2A, the regular council meeting minutes for December 12th. Motion, please, Councilor Blatts.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that the minutes from the December 12th, 2022 regular council meeting be adopted as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Blatts. Any questions from council at this time? Seeing none, I will then call for the vote, those in favor. That is carried unanimously. And special council meeting minutes, December 20th, 2022. Please, motion? Councilor Daley.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that the minutes from the December 20th, 2022 special council meeting be adopted as presented.
And once again, I would ask council if you have any questions in regards to these minutes. Seeing none, we will then call for the vote. Those in favor? That's carried, thank you. Item three on your agenda, business arising from the minutes. Seeing none, we'll move down to item four. We have no public hearing. Item five, we have no delegations and presentations. And item six, page 12 of your agenda, please, 6A, bylaw 2023-01, the cemetery bylaw. Is there a preamble? C.O. Williams?
Thanks, Mayor Doll. This is, as per council direction, at December 12th meeting, that the bylaw be brought forward to be amended to adjust the definition of resident to include those residents of Mountain View County, and that is the only change for council's consideration today.
Thank you, C.O. Williams. We'll move forward at this point, then, for consideration for first, second, and permission for unanimous consent, and third and final reading if council chooses. Starting with first reading, please. Deputy Mayor Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I make the motion that first reading be given to bylaw 2023-01 cemetery bylaw as presented.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I will ask you if council has any questions for first reading. Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I noticed under the, under this item is financial considerations and a note that it would be tracked over the next several years. I would ask that we even double-check, and I don't know if they have or not, because I wasn't here at the last council meeting, but whether or not there has been any tracking done in the last two years when this change was made, and see if that could be looked at as well when they, when they start to do the tracking for the, for the future, for the next couple of years.
C.O. Williams?
Thanks, Mayor Doll. Thanks, Councilor Ryan, for the question. As was mentioned, I believe, at December 12th, we have tracked the non-resident versus resident burial rate. The issue is, we haven't broken out that non-resident to Mountain View County versus, let's say, British Columbia, for instance. So that's something we're going to, you know, attempt to pay more attention to. It's, and it will take a couple of years probably to get a decent baseline for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, C.O. Williams, and Councilor Ryan, and we have Director Wegstaff.
Quick addition to what the C.O. has mentioned. We've already changed the application with a checkbox that indicates whether the, the plot is with someone that matches the criteria of being a resident. Because when we look back towards addresses, and those addresses weren't necessarily for the individual resident.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Councilor Ryan. Deputy Mayor Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. So just a further question through you to the C.O. So I assume as part of our regular process, the cemetery bylaw will come up for annual review 12 months from now, and so whatever tracking we have in place, Mountain View County versus non-resident outside of Mountain View County, we should certainly have 12 months of data to be able to make some type of analysis comparison.
Yeah, I don't want to say that it'll come up annually for review, but given that we are adjusting the tracking mechanism to force a certain purpose, and given that Mountain View County and the Town of Olds, we do have intermunicipal collaboration frameworks in place for facilities, for instance. I believe that will become a conversation when, when those agreements come up for renewal later this year as well, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We have a motion on the floor from yourself. At this time, I will call for the vote for first reading. Those in favor? That is carried. I would ask for second reading, please. Councilor Walsh?
Yes, I thank you, Mayor. I would like to give second reading to be given to bylaw 2023-01 cemetery bylaw as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Walsh. At this time, then, I would call for the vote for second reading. Those in favor? I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. You were good? Okay, that's carried. Thank you very much. And I would now ask for unanimous consent for third and final reading. Councilor Blatt.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that unanimous consent be given to present bylaw 2023-01 cemetery bylaw for third reading as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Blatts. At this time, I will call for the third and, or consent unanimously from council to move forward. Those in favor? That is carried. Third and final reading, please. Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that third reading be given to bylaw 2023-01 cemetery bylaw as presented.
Very good. And in our third and final reading, I'll call for the vote, those in favor. That is carried. Thank you, fellow council. And we will move down to page 25, item 6B, bylaw 2023-02 land use bylaw amendment. We're looking for first reading and to set a public hearing date only. So I would ask for first reading, please. Councilor Walsh?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that council gives first reading to bylaw number 2023-02.
Thank you. Does council have questions in regard to putting first reading on the floor? This is strictly for setting the public hearing date as well? Yes, Samar, do you have any comments you'd like to share at this point?
No.
That was sweet, short and sweet. I even have a note to ask Samar for questions. Thank you. And seeing that council has none, then we'll, I'll call the vote for first reading, please. Those in favor? That is carried. Counsel, I'd like to set the public hearing date. Councilor Ryan?
Point of order, sorry. I missed.
Yes. Councilor Walsh?
Made the first motion.
First reading.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. And now, go ahead, Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that council sets Monday, February 13th, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. in council chambers as the date time and place for a public hearing on bylaw 2023-02.
Thank you for putting that on the floor, Councilor Ryan. I will call for the vote, those in favor. That is carried. Thank you, and thank you for your attention and time, Samar. Sarmad, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for having me.
You take care. Bye. Moving down now to new business, page 29 of your agenda, please. This is our 2023 Family and Community Support Services, FCSS grant recommendations. C.O. Williams, will someone be speaking to these?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Dr. Wegstaff will lead us in this one.
And I. And I'll invite Heather Dixon, our lead community facilitator, to come speak directly to the allocations and the decisions behind each of those before council.
Good afternoon, Mayor Judy and council. It's a pleasure to be here this afternoon. Sorry, I'm just going to make this a little more comfortable. All right. So this year, as you can see in front of you, we are bringing some recommendations forward for the groups that have applied for funding through FCSS and Olds this year. Just a reminder that all of the applications that are submitted for any of the FCSS groups in Mountain View County head to Mountain View County Office first, where Josie at the office there then disseminates them to whatever community that group is asking for funding for. We go through those funding applications on our own and then meet as a group regionally to make sure that there's no overlap in any of the funding requests and look through them as a group to make sure that they also meet the funding requirements of the province around the FCSS funding guide. So the first one, of course, is Boys and Girls Club. In each of your summary this year, I did put project description. I have more information than what is there, obviously, but that's just a kind of a high overview of what they're doing with the monies that they would receive from us. So Boys and Girls Club continues to be one of the programs in our community that is not only highly visible but highly needed. They have 104 children currently on a waiting list for childcare, and they are working towards opening some more spots, as you have heard here, previous meetings. They're also looking at opening a youth center this year, so our department has been working alongside of them to see if we can make that happen. So a lot of exciting things happening there, and they've requested $55,000, which we are recommending that they go ahead and that that would be the amount that we're requesting from council. Shinnick School Edge Division, that's the family school wellness program. You will see quite a difference in what they've asked versus what we've suggested. That has to do with, if a, if a group is supposed to be getting funding from another government organization, we need to look at that and see what we can fund versus what the other government body is funding. So that's, that's that difference there, and I will open it up to questions at the end, most certainly. So if you have anything, we can chat about those. Mountain View Emergency Shelter Society, previous to last year, we were only funding them for their, sorry, their advertising promotion and volunteer recognition and training, but they have started new programming that fit within the parameters of FCSS funding, so we're able to offer them a little more funding for them to run those programs. They're accessed by a number of families in our community. They have things all the way from children all the way up to adults, so that's, that's a great add to our community. Mountain View Moccasin House, they are asking through this stream of funding for items that they can use in their teachings for anyone in our community, from ribbon skirt making to drums making, drum making, to blanket exercises, to all sorts of different things. So that is for their supplies and for their programming. Olds and District Hospice Society, they can ask for monies to their program, program promotions and their volunteer recognition and training, so that's what that will be for. The YES program is a program out of the high school. It does actually go to each of our schools, including they're over at Holy Trinity now a little bit as well. So they are hitting all of those, those areas, and they concentrate on mental health programming for our children. And finally, Hope Mountain View, oh, sorry, Hope for Mountain View Kids, that was a new ask this year for us, and that is doing their volunteer recognition and training. So that's just a quick kind of overview of them all, and then you'll see there that we're also asking for the amount of $10,000 to put into our budget for different projects that might come up. We've used that before in past with different mental health programs that might come up, or a guest speaker that a school wants to have come in that fit that funding model for FCSS. So that's what that, those monies would be used for. And if there are any questions about any of those, I would be glad to answer them now.
Thank you very much. I will open the floor for council, and starting with Councilor Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a quick question, maybe a clarification, because you kind of touched on it there when you were talking. So I'm going to just scroll back here on the page to the $109,000 ask, I think it's the YES program. Nope, the family school wellness program asked for $109,000. Your, and what confused me when I read this before the meeting was the very last bullet in the rationale for funding, which says that if provincial guidelines basically say if another government service is covering the cost of this, FCSS funds can't be used for it. So the sentencing there was a little confusing to me. You clarified it, I think, so I just want some, the money that we're donating, or giving the $15,000 of FCSS funding is for things that the province will not fund. That's correct?
That's correct. So that's some of their program costs, like some of the, for example, like craft items, like the actual things that they would use during their programming. So they have a tight budget for things like that, and the school does a lot of their curriculum costs, for example, that the, that the family school wellness users might use within the classroom. But what we're doing is then funding the items that the province hasn't, or the education hasn't given them money for.
Thank you. Are you done, Councilor Cummings? Okay, Councilor Ryan, please.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I have a question with regards to, I guess, the funding request from the YES and then with regards to the HOPE. So I'm just looking at the past history of 2022 for YES. We gave 17,000, and then now this year they've asked for 20. It, you know, I'm just wondering why they would need the additional 3,000. Like, it seems to be going up, it goes up and then down, and, you know, I'm just not sure about the requests going up and down like that. I'm just wondering about whether or not, you know, we, we look at funding all of that one, and then we don't fund all of the HOPE one. What would be the difference between the two? Like, why would we not give at least $2,000 to HOPE and take maybe $1,000 away from the YES? What's the rationale behind that? If you can give me an idea?
Sorry. So when we go through the funding applications, we comb them to see what we can fund and what we can't, based on those FCSS regulations that we have. And it's very clear that anything that has to do, example, with transportation or medical things like that, we cannot fund. So that's where HOPE for Mountain View Kids does not fit into that funding model, whereas the YES program is all about preventative mental health programming. So giving our kids those coping skills to, you know, deal with anything that comes their way and help them be more resilient. So that fits right into the FCSS funding model. And you'll find also, for example, with the hospice, a lot of what hospice does, we can't fund, but we can fund, again, their programming and their volunteer recognition and training. So that's, that's just some of the rules around that. As far as the amounts going up and down for YES, the YES program coordinator is really, really attentive to what she needs. So she, for example, has a year where the programming that they're going to do is going to cost a little less, then she works that into her budget and reflects that nicely for us. So she's very aware of what's happening in her program. They have added an extra staff, I believe, in the last year or two, so that has been a change, and they've also increased their programming in our community to be all schools. So originally, it was just really the high school and junior high, and now you're going to be seeing them all in Holy Trinity as well as elementary school. So their programming is increasing. They also run all summer long, so they actually run a summer camp in the summertime for a week or two for kids that have parents that can't afford maybe a regular program, and they've actually utilized our dry surface at the sportsplex for their programming last summer. So for, in, in our world, we call them a good bang for our buck, because they're doing quite a lot of programming and connecting for quite a low amount, actually, so, yeah.
Thank you very much for that information, Ms. Dixon, because that's, that's good to know and good to hear, that they're, they're doing so much with YES, and obviously, the rationale behind not giving HOPE is understandable with regards to the medical things and things that you can't fund. So I'm really pleased to hear the, the thinking and the thought process going into both of these grant spending. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Just a quick question. Thanks, Heather, for the presentation. Just, I know last year, I think there were nine organizations that benefited from our grant process. This year, it's seven. The dollars are slightly less, about 9,000 less, but it's the same seven organizations that were part of last year. I guess my question is, how satisfied are we, are you, that our outreach to the community is sufficient, that we are tapping on the shoulder any and all agencies, associations for funding? Because as I said, right now, we gave the money to seven associations last year, and it's the same seven this year.
That's a great question. So last year, you're right, we did have two extra on this list. One of them did not apply for funding this year, and the other one switched their focus on funding to be more literacy-related. So we cannot fund literacy. It is stated very plainly in our guidelines that we cannot fund literacy programs. So if a, if a group, say, was going to do something around, it might be a program where they're doing rhymes, parent and children, that appears, you know, you would think literacy right off the bat, but what it's actually doing more than that is connecting between the child and parent and building a strong relationship and bond between those two. So that's where we can look at funding different things that might fall under literacy, but have another outcome with them. If it's just straight literacy, like adult, adult tutoring, for example, we cannot fund that. So that's some of where that is. And we did have a couple, sorry, just one new group that was going to apply. They contacted me before their application process, and unfortunately, their program did not fit into the FCSS mandate for, for funding, so they chose not to apply. So we try to work with groups, and especially our, our application process, you know, it's, it's a bit of work for groups. So I do have groups that chat with me throughout the year to see if they're going to fit. And an example of that is the Mountain View Emergency Shelter Society. When I found out that they were actually running some programs around, you know, what a positive relationship would look like, how to, how to look for those programs for kids building their self-esteem, those children that might be, you know, in a bad situation with their families, but teaching them those skills for when they get older, that preventative kind of things. I chatted with them about increasing their ask and what programs they could ask for funding for. So I think as a department, we're very in touch with the groups that we fund, and we're actually, this year, we're working very hard, the, our team right now, to start finding out where those holes are that we might be missing. And we're putting together a referral list so that we have all sorts of referrals for people who are phoning in and might need some assistance. We're actually doing a lot of digging, and in our digging, we have found that there's actually a rural mental health association, that we have some people here in town, so we're reaching out. So things are changing in a good way, and I'm excited to see 2023, how FCSS is going to be able to really kind of serve our community even better than we have.
Deputy Mayor, you could add on to that, and then we'll close with Council Cummings.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And yeah, just certainly a supplemental and probably more a comment. I'm encouraged to hear the proactive approach relative to looking at holes and putting finger in the, in the holes in the dyke there. Because again, and that's exactly where I'm trying to get to, is you don't know what you don't know. If I'm an association out there that may be eligible for the funding, if I don't even know about it, then I don't know to apply and go through the rigor and everything else. So, yeah, I'm encouraged that, excuse me, we are trying to be proactive or will be proactive in that area, so, thanks.
Council Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think I did something that my father told me I should never do, and I made an assumption. I assume that there were a lot more applications than those that were approved. So I'm going to, from the hints that you've given here, we've approved in some way or another all of the eligible applications that we have received, and there were no groups that applied that we had to choose, say, no, you can't have funding or anything like that. Is that normal? That we are normally not at a position where we're turning away groups that are eligible for funding because we don't have the funds in the FCSS budget?
So that will vary from year to year. Sometimes, some groups might endeavor a new program, and their ask might be a bit more. We also have new groups. In the past, we've had different groups come up. We had one year, for example, the, oh, no, sorry, Big Brothers, Big Sisters had come to Olds. That was back in like 2015, for example, so we had a bit more of ask, I believe, in that year. So it does fluctuate, and during conversations, when, when budget deliberations are happening, we discuss what we can afford to fund out and what we're looking at. So, so, yeah, so we do set that, and there have been times where we maybe have not given the organization their full ask, but, you know, have had to pull it back a bit. We always try to fund the groups that are eligible something. There is a question on the application that states, if they don't receive their full funding, will they be able to continue with their programming? Because, you know, if, if that's the case, then we wouldn't want to fund them partial if they can't complete. So we try to take care of all of those questions for people, just because it's not guaranteed every year they're going to get their full amount. Hopefully, that answers that.
Thank you very much for all your comments shared. I would like to ask at this time if I could have a motion, please. We will be dealing with two separate motions for these. Councilor Blatts, for our first motion.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that council approves the Family and Community Support Services, FCSS grants for 2023 as recommended by administration as follows. You don't need me to list these, in the amount of $110,000.
As presented.
As presented, thank you.
Any further questions? I'll call for the vote at this time, those in favor. That is carried. Thank you. A motion, please, for the second recommendation for 10,000. Councilor Walsh?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that council approves $10,000 allocated in the FCSS budget to be approved by the Director of Community Services in increments up to 5,000, to be distributed to eligible projects that may apply throughout the year.
Thank you, Councilor Walsh. At this time, I'll call for the vote, those in favor. That's carried. Thank you very much. Well done. Good information. Item eight, no reports from council at this time. Item nine, C.O. report and action list. Page 45 of your agenda. C.O. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I just had a few items before going into the included agenda sheets. As per council's donation policy, 803(c), required to report on when a donation under $1,000 has been approved. $250 has been approved to the Farmers and Farmerettes Bonspiel to occur this year. I believe the first one post-COVID. I believe the entire budget for that is, is just around $6,000. So that's the first out of that GL code for this year. Couple of project updates. The outdoor rink, the boards are due to start being installed on Wednesday. It should take approximately seven working days. And then weather dependent, we hope to have ice in there by the end of the month. Also on Wednesday, the new library sign, which has been often delayed, is due for installation. It has been fabricated offsite, and the base has been in place for a while. So that should go Wednesday, and then, as you're probably aware, ONET Board of Directors Call has been out and closes January 31st. There's been some interest, and I'll update council at a future date, once the Governance Committee has a chance to look at the applications. And, I see, yeah, okay. First one, so Newtoue Correspondence, on the action item list, which was originally dated for today, didn't have time to complete the entire Newtoue side of things, so I pushed most of the financial piece to January 30, 23rd meeting. That was just time constrained. But just to summarize what administration has received, and directly through, to us from emails, phone calls, voicemails, some letters sent, and from whatever council sent me, and then what Mayor Doll received, 35 individuals sent concerns to the town regarding the announcement of the closure of Newtoue. All of those were essentially voicing displeasure, asking council to reconsider. All those letters were sent prior to the December 15th announcement of the transfer of Newtoue from the Town of Olds to the Old and District Hospice Society. And since that time, December 15th, we only received one letter, essentially, not in agreeance with the Hospice Society taking it over. So since that time, nothing else, and at the 23rd meeting, I'll have that specific cost breakdown.
Yeah, I could add to the one letter on the 15th that you received that was late, that the lady that, she contacted me and apologized she wasn't aware of what was taking place at the time and went ahead and forwarded it. So she, she is happy where we landed.
Let me scroll down a little bit. And the action list from last meeting, the Newtoue costing, January 23rd, as mentioned, the snow removal program is being brought to service level review, CPO priorities also to service level review, and the request to add the highway maintenance information, specifically that Volker specifically that Volker Stevan, who's the AT contractor's responsible for curb-to-curb maintenance on highways 2A and 27, has been advertised and it's on our website. And we'll make that a recurring thing throughout each winter. And then just last, if you scroll down even further, Shyla, there's just the reported problem summary for December. Slower month than November, given the, the lack of snowfall. So I believe why road issues still came to the top fairly minor overall. Bylaw being our other one that where issues remain open, problems remain open, rather. So we weren't able to close them. So this eventually will become part of a KPI metric to measure what we're trying to achieve in terms of closing problems as they come in. But for now, again, as I mentioned last meeting, this is only the second time council is viewing this format, open to suggestions and, and whatnot to better explain or better highlight what we're receiving from citizens through here. And I think that's everything.
Thank you.
Happy to take any questions.
All right. Any questions for our C O at this point? If not, I'd ask for a motion, please, to accept for information the C O report. Council Blatts?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that we accept the C O verbal update as presented for information.
Thank you. Those in favor? That is carried. And we will move to financial, page 49, please, of your agenda. And I will move right to Director Linderman.
Thank you, Mayor. So today, we're just looking for council to set the tax recovery sale conditions for our March 28th tax recovery sale. It will be held here in council chambers at 2:00 PM. And we also need council to set the reserve bids for the two properties that are, it's not eligible, but that we must sell prior to March 31st. It is specified in the MGA that they must be sold after a lien has been placed on the property. And with that, I will just open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Director Linderman. And the floor is now open. Council Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the first time for me going through this process on council. So I do have a couple of questions about the process, just so I have a better understanding. I understand that Lot 10, Block 5, Plan blah, 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 is the legal definition of the property. Do we advertise it as an actual address people can recognize?
We do not. We advertise it as Lot, Lot, Plan, but you are able to go on our website under the assessment inquiry. You could type that in and the address would come up.
It seems a little anti-sales orientated. If we are trying to sell something, we should be, I think, being a little bit more accessible in how, I mean, granted, we have to do that. We have to put that legal address down. I get that. That makes sense. But some sort of address that is more common so we can have. The other question I had was, is it required to be done here and by the town itself? Or can it be done by a third party at auction club?
You can do it by a third party, yes, definitely. We have always just done it here ourselves.
Go, continue.
Thank you. So that, again, doesn't, I mean, I don't know the history and whether or not we've been truly successful in getting a large group of bidders on a piece of property that we're doing here by the town in our, in our little room here, as opposed to what we could see in a, in a broader auction. Do we have any statistical information on how these sales have gone in the past? In attendance, specifically in attendance? Are we getting just the one person who wants their property back? Or are we getting multitude of bidders on these properties? Are we keeping track of anything like that at all?
And I should specify, we can't go out to a public auction. It has to be done. You could hire an auctioneer to come in here. But it still needs to follow the MGA regulations on how to sell the property. In the past, no, we have not had anyone come. Typically, the property owner ends up, they, they have, they can pay up until 159, right before the auction is set, and they would be removed from the sale. So typically, that is what happens.
C O Williams?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. And just to add to Council Cummings' questions and Director Linderman's explanation, the tax sale process is a very delicate one in Alberta. Property owners have up until the minute before the auction begins to pay their taxes and therefore discounting their sale on the property. So that has implications for advertising the property as well. And then with advertising in particular, one key issue that many municipalities, I would, I would dare to say most or all, since some of these properties are either business properties or they involve related parties, that releasing this information too publicly could have an effect on someone besides the property owner who's in arrears. So we tend to be a bit more cautious that way. And with, with larger centers that have more tax rolls coming year to year and perhaps more popular purchase items, that's where an auctioneer can be hired to come in and run the auction. But if we only have two or three to 10 rolls, generally, I have done auctions before in the past, for instance. It's, it's more of a cost-saving measure than anything. And that risk that someone can come in at the 11th hour and pay, it's, it's just, doesn't seem fiduciary responsible to pay an auctioneer upfront.
Thank you for that explanation, C O Williams. At this time then, I'd entertain a, Deputy Mayor, you'd like to make a motion?
No, I have a question, please.
Question first then? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. So yeah, again, I'm new to the process. Could either the Director of Finance or the C O kind of take through? So what's going to happen on, on March 28th, Tuesday at 2:00 PM, presumably on the town office or council chambers or whatever? What does that process look like? How long does it run? And then there are no bids, the reserve bid isn't met. So then what happens?
Thank you. So at 2:00 PM in council chambers, we call the auction open. I have in the past, being the auctioneer, I haven't talked to C O whether or not, how we're going to do it. But typically, we just open up the auction, sit around and wait. We've typically given it about 30 minutes for someone to come. No one comes, we close it, and then the town takes ownership of the property.
Thank you for the explanation. And now I'd entertain a motion, please, for the first section and the first motion. It will have three motions here. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I'll make the motion. The council set the terms and conditions of the tax recovery sale scheduled for Tuesday, March 28th, 2023, at 2:00 PM in the Town of Olds Council Chambers as follows. These properties are being offered for sale on an as-is, where-as basis. These properties are being offered for sale subject to a reserve bid and to the reservations and conditions contained in the existing certificate of title. And the third point, payment of successful bid shall be made by cash or certified check payable to the Town of Olds, a non-refundable deposit of 20% at the time of the sale, with the balance of 80% of bid due within 10 days.
Deputy Mayor Wilson? Any further questions before I call the vote? Seeing none, I will call the vote, those in favor. That's carried unanimously. A motion, please, for the second. Council Daley?
Thank you, Mayor Judy. That role, I move that role 440300, Lot 10, Block 5, Plan 1518JK, have a reserve bid of 249,000. 279,000, excuse me, placed on it for the public auction scheduled Tuesday, March 28th, 2023, at 2:00 PM in the Town of Olds Council Chambers.
Thank you. Questions for the second motion? Seeing none or hearing none, I'll call for the vote, those in favor. That's carried. And for the third motion, please. Okay, we'll go with Council Blatts, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that role 4600200, Lot A, Plan 7063JK, have a reserve bid of $2,888,000 placed on it for public auction scheduled for Tuesday, March 28th, 2023, at 2:00 PM in the Town of Olds Council Chambers.
Thank you, Council Blatts. I will now call for the vote, those in favor. That's carried. Thank you for your explanation, Director Linderman. And we will now move forward to page 51, item 10B. This is the request for tax exemption.
Thank you. So in the past, administration has brought property tax exemptions as one-off applications as they have been received. In order to tighten up this process for the 2023 taxation year, I have asked each discretionary exemption to submit an application prior to the November 30th deadline. Of these, seven applications were received. Each of these applications have previously been exempted from taxation with the exception of the Friends of Grizzlies, as this is a new application this year. The MGA states that property that is used for charitable and benevolent purpose, that is for the benefit of the general public and owned by a nonprofit organization, is exempt from taxation if it meets the qualifications and conditions in the regulations. So under the Community Organization Property Tax Exemption Regulation, there are five basic requirements that must be met in order for the property to be exempt. These were all included in your agenda package. And as was stated in the RFP, four of the five requirements have been met with all of these applications. However, today, council needs to determine if the remaining requirement that the property is being used for a charitable and benevolent purpose, that is for the benefit of the general public, is being met. So to assist in this, I had included in the RFP a table that outlined the organization's objective and purpose. And that was taken word from word from each of their applications. And with that, I would open it up, I guess, for some council discussion on the exemptions.
Thank you. I will do that prior to. I'll let council know that as each one of these are separate, we will do seven separate motions. And I'll open the floor at this time for any questions with regards to gymnastics club. Council Ryan?
I have actually a question with regards to the process, if I could ask that first.
If that's your question, please do.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Through you to Director Linderman. Can you tell me, on page 53, we have a list of all of the, the rule numbers and the tax exemption, the estimated number at the 29,000. Is this just the municipal portion?
No, this is the full, full tax. So includes education, seniors, and municipal.
Okay, I can understand the, my comment will be then, I can understand municipal portion. I cannot understand education and Mountain View Seniors Housing portion of the tax exemption. So I would, I would not be in favor of doing that without separating that out.
Thank you. That's, are you done your comments at this point? For all seven, is that what you're pertaining to or just this particular item?
For all seven.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. And similar to Council Ryan, I just have a comment on the process. I, we're only two weeks past Christmas, but I'll put on my Scrooge outfit here. I do have concerns. I know the requirements relative to the MGA, or at least I'm somewhat familiar. But one thing I look at is, so last year, council was presented with two requests for $7,000 in exemptions. Now we have seven requests, two which are recurring, for just under $30,000, correct?
So they are all reoccurring with the exception of the Friends of Grizzlies. All of these have previously been exempt.
Okay. Do we, I know it was discussed a year ago. Do we know the total of the exemption? Well, maybe that's a separate question. I don't want to take us down a rabbit hole here.
That's why it's being done this way now, so that all of the exemptions can be presented at one time to council so you can see every single one.
So when I see, sorry to interrupt, when I see 30,000, that's the total of the exemptions for the town?
The discretionary exemptions. There are exemptions in place, like schools, hospitals, churches, seniors housing. That council has no, they are just exempt under the MGA. These are the total of the discretionary exemptions.
Good. Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further questions? Council Blatts?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. And I, I want to go back to Council Ryan's comment. And I have to say, I kind of concur with her comments on the school taxation and the seniors housing. I think I would be more apt to support these applications if they were going to have to pay those portions of the taxation. And I don't know how difficult that would be to bring back that information to council and perhaps maybe make a, a presentation at our next council meeting. Or could we approve it today based on those, that criteria? Because this is only estimated at 30,000. That's a significant amount of money, close to 30,000. So, and I read the comment here that we should be mindful that property taxation means equally distribute total tax burden against other property owners. But I don't think that we should include the school tax or the seniors housing in this. That's just my only comments and thoughts.
Council Blatts? Any further comments? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. And again, through you to the Director of Finance. And does council have the purview, the authority? If we do deem there is, these agencies, however many there are, do provide benevolence and charitable aspect to the community and goodwill, does council have the authority to enact a bylaw that would reverse the exemption, if that makes sense? Or exclude these, any or all of these agencies from the tax exemption?
I don't know that you can exclude them from tax exemption. You can pass a bylaw that would automate, make them exempt automatically. But I don't think you can make it so that they're not exempt. You know, if that makes any sense. Because if, if these requirements are made, you must make them exempt, is kind of how it reads. And so that is in place to protect these nonprofits, I believe.
We have two more questions. I would also add, this, and this can vary every year. We could have, there's others that can certainly ask. So this will vary every year, more or less. So, very good. Now, who was first, Deputy Mayor and Council Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I just, I had a supplement, and you're exactly right. My concern is it can vary on the more side, perhaps, as we go and increase from the seven that we have now or whatever to potentially more in terms of numbers and, and the dollar impact to the tax rule. But I, I read the guidelines that were published. And unfortunately, I can't remember what the date of that publishing was. Maybe it's old and antiquated when the government, provincial government did the review. But I thought there was a clause or an allowance in there that said, okay, if it, if an organization meets the requirements and there is benevolence and charitable and good, the council can come back and after a year, you're going to enforce a bylaw, put a bylaw in that would not take effect for a year, though. Basically exempting the exemption, if that makes sense. So I would just like, well, for me, I would like that clarity. Because like I said, I've got my Scrooge outfit on. I don't dispute the impact of these organizations and what they do. But I look at a total package. And we just gave $55,000 to the Boys and Girls Club, I believe, out of the community services. We do a lot of, and I'm not signaling out the Boys and Girls Club. We do a lot for the Olds Grizzlies in terms of support. So I'm sympathetic to our business community and our residents who, yeah, they're seeing great escalation in assessment values, but they're also being asked to dip into their wallets, too.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Council Ryan?
Thank you. And I do concur with Counselor Wilson with regards to his comments. My concern is always that we'll have more and more and more of these requests, and it has happened. Now, remember on council a few years ago, when we first started to do this, we only had one or two. And now we've got, you know, the number that we have right now. So it does, it does increase. However, I just want to point out that we don't really need to have a bylaw to exempt the exemptions. It does say that, in the MGA, it does say allows for you to, for municipality to do that. It doesn't necessarily tell you, you must do that. And so it doesn't, you know, we're not necessarily stuck to the, to a, a point here where we have to, we have to give this. We don't have to. We don't need to proceed if we don't feel that, that it's a, something that we would support. All of these groups, I agree with Counselor Wilson, all these groups do have a tremendous benefit in our community. But as he pointed out, we just gave 55,000 to the Boys and Girls Club, and now we've got another 7,000 that we're, you know, that is on the list. So. So I do think we need to balance things off, and one way of doing that is by saying, you know, we'll, you know, not allow, we'll exempt the municipal portion, but they still have to pay the education portion, just like everybody else within the province. So, you know, I'm still of mind that I might be able to, to go along with the municipal one, but the taxation for education and Mountain View seniors housing should, they should still pay that portion.
I will have Director Linderman respond, and then go to Counsel Cummings.
So I have found the portion in the MGA here. So if they do meet the charitable and benevolent to the general public, they must be exempt. They, yeah, it is, they are exempt from taxation. But Counsel Wilson is correct that council can pass a bylaw that would make any property that is exempt from taxation subject to taxation. So, but it does take a year for that to come into effect. So if council wishes, we could bring that forward.
Okay, thank you very much, and appreciate that clarification, because it did say in our document here, allows for, so it didn't say you must. So thank you for that clarification.
Yes, thank you very much. It really helps for clarity around the table. Counsel Cummings?
Thank you, Director Linderman. So that is exactly what I was about to mention here, because I have 362-1 here, and it does say that the following are exempt, period. So when you look down the list, I found examples inside out this big, long list that they are, which begs the question, why is it here at council? If it's required to have these by the MGA without us being able to say no, unless we wanted to create a whole bylaw to do that? This is a nice information piece, but us actually approving it seems a little bit outside of the purview when we're just following the MGA.
Thank you, Director Linderman. And then again, for Counsel Ryan, and we'll move forward. Thank you.
So the part that we're looking at council for approval is, the wording is, used for charitable benevolent purpose, that is for the benefit of the general public. So we're looking for that guidance as to whether or not these seven organizations fit that general public.
Who else? Counsel Ryan, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Director Linderman. So then you're basically saying that it's up to council to judge whether or not they fit into that criteria that you're talking about. Okay. That's one clarification. The other clarification I want to ask you is, with regards to the MGA, when it says must and it talks about tax exemption, does it include the education tax? And it certainly would include Mountain View seniors housing, because that's just a local requisition that we have within the county of Mountain View. So what is, does it have any reference to education tax there, or is it just talking about municipal tax?
It just says it's exempt from taxation, period.
That would be open to interpretation, then, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. My final comment aligns, I think, with Counsel Ryan and Counsel Blatts. I would be, once we get beyond this point of agreement on the definition or whether these apply as benevolent and good for the community, I would certainly be open to some kind of sharing of the tax obligation, whether that's, because our total municipal tax rule, I think, for 20, for last year, or this, yeah, 2022, was about $15 million. On the one hand, the materiality, this is like a pebble in the ocean. But I am concerned where this potentially could go. I am concerned about being fair to everyone. And so if there was some proration, proration you could do, whether that's on the requisitions or a partial reduction, but I'd certainly open to some kind of a give and take. But to just give $30,000 away, that kind of hurts me and my little tummy. Thank you.
CEO Williams?
Yeah, so the RFD on the table is to approve it as it looks. If you don't like it, you must turn down the RFD. I would have to disagree with Counsel Wilson. You start piecemealing this into a prorated or percentage-wise base, you're, no one's going to win here. We'll be here all week trying to talk about that. So I would ask council either to vote on the RFD as presented or ask to send it back, table it for now, more or less, receive it for information. Thank you.
Was there not an option that if we do, if we do vote on what's on the table, and we choose as a council's whole to change it, it's going to take a year to change anyway, so we just reintroduce something new?
No, that's only if council wants to make a bylaw forboding these organizations. What you can do is, you can make, pass, make a motion as amended. The only issue, technically can make a motion to forgive the municipal portion, we just don't have those totals in place, and those ought to be in place, if that's what council wants, before making that motion. So I would say either the resolutions as presented or to table it for a future meeting.
Counsel Walsh, and then Counsel Ryan?
I have no trouble supporting this motion. There's, these people do provide a benefit to our community, and the budget we approve is already, has included these exemptions, so I have no concern that that's a big issue for our community. So I have no problem. It's historic, and yeah, it's, it's not huge in the scheme of things. I agree.
Counsel Walsh and Counsel Ryan, and then I will put this to the floor. We have.
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor Doll. And I was just going to make a motion to ask administration to bring this back with just the municipal portion included.
Well, I-
So I would suggest we throw that on, that motion on the table and vote on it, and then see where it flies.
I would, so I guess we could put the motion as is on the table, and instead of going through each one of them, because they are just all different businesses or taxes, I was thinking, that's why I wanted to do them individually, but they're, if we just go through the names, is all, all as one? Right. Did she put, did you make that motion? Can you please make that again for the recorder?
Yeah, I make a motion to ask administration to bring this item back to the next council meeting with regard, or future council meeting, with regards to including just the tax exemption for these groups, for the municipal portion only.
Thank you very much. That's the motion that's on the floor. Is everyone clear with that motion? Okay, and that doesn't mean it can't be done this month still. So I will call for the vote. Those in favor? Those opposed? That's carried. We will be taking a recess, or as we have a municipal planning commission set for 2:00 PM, and we will reconvene shortly, about four minutes. What would you like, how-
You're not reconvening in four minutes?
To MPCs, yes.
You're starting your MPC meeting.
May I have a motion to go into recess? Please? I just have to call, I don't need a motion for that? Okay, you're, I'm getting confused with these MPCs. It'll straighten up. Very good. Let's, we'll make some position changes here.
Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen, and council colleagues. Please turn to item 11A Correspondence and Information, page 54. And we will review the correspondence that's been presented. And I would ask council, through this correspondence from A to I, if you have any further questions. Seeing none at this point, then, I will ask for a motion to put this on the floor, please. Counselor Daley.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that correspondence and information report ending January 9, 2023 be received for information.
Thank you, Counselor Daley. I will then call for the vote at this time, those in favor. That is carried unanimously. Very good. We are at the end of our open portion of our agenda. We will be moving into a closed session with regards to three FOIP items. And when council goes into the closed session for continued participation in the virtual council meeting, stay online in the live stream meeting platform. And the meeting stream will be replaced by a graphic and music will play. When the music stops, the meeting is reconvening. If you choose to shut down your live stream, please watch the Town of Old's social media feeds where the reconvening time will be posted. The social media feeds can also be found at the bottom of the homepage of the Town of Old's website. At this time, I would ask council or for a motion to move into closed session. Anyone? Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Please. Thank you, Mayor Doll. I'd make the motion that council proceed into a closed session at 2:41 PM with item one, FOIP Section 16, Disclosure Harmful to Business.
Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen, and viewers. We would now move into our rise and report session and with item one for Olds Fiber Limited Board of Directors appointments, I would like motion please. I believe Deputy Mayor Wilson is prepared there.
Thank you, Mayor Dole. I would make the motion that the OFL Governance Committee has reviewed Todd Orman's application and that council accept the recommendation of the Governance Committee to appoint him to the OFL Board for a period of three years commencing February 1, 2023.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I will now call for the vote. Those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Item two, Mountain View Emergency Shelter, and I'm looking over Council Blatts.
Thank you, Mayor Dole. I move that Council Direct Administration to apply for the CMHC National Housing Strategies Rapid Housing Initiative grant on behalf of the Mountain View Emergency Shelter.
Thank you, Council Blatts. I will now call for the vote. Those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. And item three, Organizational Review, and I'm looking over Council Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Dole. I move that we accept the presentation from our CAO on organizational review for information.
Thank you, Council Ryan. I now call for the vote. Those in favor? That is carried. We will now look for a motion please for adjournment. Council Daly?
Yes, I move that we adjourn our -- I've got to figure out the time here. Adjourn our regular council meeting for January 9 at 4:18.
4:18 PM. I will now call for the vote for adjournment. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.